Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners cordially invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Aliria. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
June 30th, 2002, in the amount of $100,683.99. I'd like to authorize the President or the Vice President to execute on behalf of the Board.
Salute.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Joe, can you help me out? I understand that TANF money can be rolled over and then on the second year if it's not all used, then it returns to the state?
It cannot be rolled over.
I think you'll have to come up here. Sorry about that.
The county TANF dollars have to be spent in this fiscal year. They cannot be rolled over.
Okay, because I was in Columbus and they were talking about the TANF money. No area of where it's spent can the money be rolled over into another year?
It may be done at the state level, but not at the county level. We have incentive dollars that we've gained through different incentives by certain participations and other things where we get dollars that can be carried over, but that's a completely different part of money.
Is this number 13 with I was?
Are they right?
Is what, why, Commissioner?
The dates.
Yes, the dates are right. Let me explain it by May 1.
Next week's?
We received a wellness block grant, the potentiality of approximately $300,000 for the express purpose of the prevention of teen pregnancies. We received that early to late fall while we were working on it. We ran into substantial amount of problems with designing a program that would fit under the guidelines of TANF expenditures. Previous to that, we had used GRF dollars which are not as severely restricted or hampered in how they're spent as TANF dollars. We've been wrestling with this issue and we've received a lot of help from the people at ODJS, Children Family Council, and others to try to put together a viable program. We need to spend this money by June 30th or it reverts back to the state. So we rapidly put together a public outreach program to be able to get some of this money out into the community. While I'm not pleased that we're going to end up returning quite a bit of money to the state under the Wellness Block Grant, this does get some money spent rather than no money spent, and we have plans to revamp that program as we're going to be, we made application for grant money for next fiscal year so that we get maximum utilization of the dollars at the local level. It's a learning experience for us. The shifting of the funding sources is what causes a lot of inability to be able to properly use those dollars.
Joe, can we waive the eligibility requirement for teenagers? Because I'm thinking if that can be waived, the state gives us a lot of local authority. And if we can waive that eligibility requirement, we can get this into the schools because not all kids that are sexually involved are poor kids.
I'm not adverse on this program, so I really can't answer that.
Can I try that?
Are you versed on it? Because I believe if we can open that door, we can spend the whole $317,000 and in July we are applying for another $317,000.
For this particular program, the state stipulates that the money cannot roll over, so it does end on June 30th. And it must be spent for pregnancy prevention, strictly for pregnancy prevention, and the target population is age, I believe, 10 through 19. It stipulates the target population also. Those numbers may be a little incorrect.
No, my concern would be with the authority that the state has given us to determine what programs we want to use this money for, can we waive the eligibility for requirement? Because if we can do that, it would open the door for us to go into the schools and offer it to all teenagers. But the way it is now, you can't do that.
Correct. As the program is written currently, if there is direct impact on pregnancy prevention and it's a one-on-one with the children, then we do need to look at the TANF eligibility.
Right, but if we open it and it doesn't have to be a one-on-one, in other words, you can go in an auditorium with a school full of kids and offer the same program, but you can't right now. Can we waive that, the eligibility requirement, so that we can get into the schools and offer it to all teenagers?
I think that's something that we would need to look at and to talk with the state about.
We've already done that, okay? And I think you were in some of those meetings when that very question was asked since the beginning of the year. The answer we received was no, that if the services, as you started alluding to, if the services were provided on a one-on-one basis, i.e. the mentoring program that we designed for the school systems, then we had to do a PRC application.
But you said it right there. We designed. It's a local decision.
Right.
So we can redesign this and open it up and still waive the eligibility. That's all I'm getting at.
When I met with the, with our, under our partnership agreement, we have a regional, Tracy Bennett was here, and I met with Tracy Bennett from the State Department of ODJS, and we were expressly told that we cannot provide one-on-one services without verifying eligibility under TANF guidelines for direct services. I agree with you, Commissioner. We want that, and we want that desperately, and we've been trying to get that waived.
Okay, I'm just saying waive two things now. The one-on-one and the eligibility requirement. Can we talk to the Director, Tom Hayes, and find out if it can be done? See if we have enough local authority to do this.
Yeah, we can, we can talk to ODJS and see what they have to say. But if the service that's being provided is an outreach service such as, I would say, an assembly where it's, you're not, you're not giving one-on-one type of information to a person or counseling that person on pregnancy prevention, you're just giving like a public information session, that it would be an allowable expenditure. That would be my opinion.
So then we can do that.
Because you would not be doing one-on-one type of service.
We are doing that, Commissioner, but to...
So if we buy these baby dolls with some of this money that these kids take home, I understand they're pretty expensive, that's not a one-on-one, you give it to the school and they can use them, and then we could use more of this money. That's just one suggestion, but I'm sure that we can come up with a lot where we could use it in a training session for all teenagers.
We, one of the problems with general outreach programs is you, it's very hard to identify your target audience, and handing out pamphlets and billboards and ads, they don't, we need that one-on-one that you're mentioning, you know, the mentoring program, that personalized service, and hopefully, you know, we can get them to assist us at getting, we had a very good mentoring program, I thought, designed for the schools, and because of the verification of eligibility, we weren't able to do that. I wasn't aware, you were so knowledgeable on it, and I appreciate that.
Well, what's happening is the schools are not going to monitor the eligibility, and they have no way of doing that. It's going to be too timely.
Commissioner Moore, you spoke to me earlier about Avon on this issue too.
Yeah, I know, that's not, I personally believe this is not an income issue, because I just, I agree with you, and I think there's more than just one issue here, and what I'm hearing is that there is an opportunity, we're just, this board's just tired of sending money back to the state, because it's hard enough to get it here, and I think you guys feel the same. And all we're trying to say is there's other ideas here to get more money here, and I believe in that the baby system where they have to, they have to carry, it's better than carrying a bag of flour around, I'd rather see them carry a weighted baby doll around town and see what it feels like.
Instead of all this advertisement, we can buy these baby dolls for all the schools and use up some of the money, but that is, to me, on a one-to-one kind of.
So I think what I'm hearing today is that I think we're too late for this year.
For this year.
But what can we, what can we do to ensure that next year we use 100% of the funds?
We are designing a program that will be permissible under the TANF guidelines, but I still think we need to resolve this issue on personalized services and verification of eligibility. The question I asked is very similar to one Commissioner Vasquez, and I don't think I've received a satisfactory answer yet, is, is specific program dollars under TANF target dollars able to be waived for certain programs for eligibility? Not maybe all TANF dollars, but specific allocations of TANF dollars.
You have to find out if we have the authority to do that. I mean, they give, the state has given local a lot of authority in regards to this money and how we use it. So if that's a part of the authority we have, let's do it. As a matter of fact, before we send some of this back, can we buy a bunch of baby dolls with some of the money, the state, if you keep it here?
Actually, no. We had to resubmit to the state, when we resubmitted the Wellness Block Grant, we resubmitted it for the change to the state, how we're going to spend the dollars. They actually have to approve those, that program, am I not correct?
Correct. They approve your proposal.
So what we have here, we resubmitted to the state, got approval for this portion, and they agreed to that, and we did that in a very, very hastily put-together manner so we can spend some dollars. So we were going to spend dollars on different stuff, we once again have to go back and seek approval of a grant modification. If I'm wrong, please tell me.
That's my understanding, yes, that's correct.
So can we modify it?
I don't think we have enough time between now and the end of June, Commissioner. I won't say anything's impossible, I'll talk to...
Let's try it.
Absolutely. We can always try.
And next year, is that the last of the TANF money? The $317,000 that we'll get in July? Will that be the last year?
It's scheduled to be the last year. Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks. That's all I have.
Thanks, Commissioner. Regarding this issue?
Yes.
Yes, you may come to the podium and state your name.
It's just a brief statement.
No.
I was just going to confirm that it is a good idea. My son went to Aliria Catholic High School in the Life Skills Program. They use these dolls that she's talking about, and they are very effective, and you use their buttons and you program their crying, their feeding, you have to babysit them just, they're the life size, and the Life Skills Program at Aliria Catholic use this very effectively and successfully. So I just wanted to say, it's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
And what's your name?
Okaforanis.
Okay, thanks. Okay, then, is there a motion regarding this?
Yes. Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd like to authorize various services to be purchased during, using the Department of Job and Family Services Title 20 allocation for state fiscal year 2002 as follows. For Catholic charity services of Lorraine County Adult Daycare, $84,000. Heritage Home Health Agency Homemaker Home Health Aid Services, $120,000. Safe Harbor of Lorraine County for Protective Services for Adults, $24,000. Neighbor House Association for Protective Services for Adults, $105,000. The Volunteer Guarding Ship Program, also Protective Services for Adults, $11,000. I'd authorize Mary McGolsen, Director of the Job and Family Services, to execute contracts on behalf of the Commissioners as needed with the county prosecutor's approval as to form.
Salute.
Discussion? Mrs. Vasquez?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd authorize Lorraine County Engineer to construct and improve guardrail end treatments on 22 county bridges. These are approach guardrails on concrete parapet bridges. The total estimated cost is $222,186.72. This grant is 100% federal funded. The county engineer has chosen to use the local project administration program through which the county will bid and inspect the project. The engineer has submitted plans and bid package to the Department of Transportation and has received approval of the package and authorization to bid. I'd authorize the clerk to receive bids on Thursday, June 13th, 2002, at 2:00 p.m. in the public hearing room. I need to publish this notice in the Chronicle-Telegram Morning Journal on May 30th and June 6th, 2002.
Salute.
I'll second, and I believe Mr. Kearney would like to come up and make a statement.
Thank you, good morning. Briefly on Item 15, this is a County Engineers Association controlled funding federally. So the application procedure is going through the County Engineers Association. That money is more and more readily available as time goes on. So we're attacking this very aggressively. I'm quite proud of the efforts of my staff on the behalf of 100% of $222,000 receiving this for upgrading our bridge guard railings. We'll be attacking this at least yearly, perhaps more readily than that. The reason I wanted to come up to the podium was to shortly address Item Number 11 that you've passed, and thank you for that. The project that you see on 11 affects hundreds of people, and I wanted that notified to the public by the television program today that's being aired in the future that it's more of an information process where we're actually addressing these by letter when the construction date is expected, but it's a good time now to tell the individuals that may be affected along these road systems that you have the terminations at the beginning and the end of each one of these projects. That the, if there's any work that they intend to do in their drive aprons within the right-ofways, I would recommend postponing that because we'll be replacing that entire apron, just to save them the expense of doing that for one year's use. They're getting more expensive, and this is a way to save money just by notifying the individuals to be affected. Engineering proposals will be by the state consultant process, and that will be tomorrow.
What's the start date for the work on this? Because this is just putting this on the...
This is, this is on the TIP supplemental, which will go through the NOAC process, as you recall, Betty and higher members, and the fiscal year for that I, we're going to bid these local project administrated, because the state will, that way we can bid our own projects, we will inspect our own projects, and we will be liable for the construction and approval of said billing and the application of the installation. We'll be totally responsible as the county engineer's office. That way we get this a little quicker, we don't have to rely on the state bidding process, we will do this ourselves, and we will inspect ourselves, which I prefer, quite frankly.
But if I have a driveway there, I'm just wondering, how long do I wait?
I'm getting to that. I would expect the first two projects to be fiscal year 2004 late, Lake Avenue, probably middle of 2005, and I'm looking for probably early 2006 for the Oberlin-Aliria Road.
Fantastic. Good job, and with your staff.
Thank you.
You can come to the podium if you have a statement regarding, talking about Number 15.
Hi, my name is Chris McCarter, and I find it most interesting that the East River-Chesnut Ridge Road is going to be authorized for resurfacing. I had a discussion with Betty Blair on the phone yesterday regarding the fact that it's never seen the light of day, that everybody who lives in that area on East River Road, Chestnut Ridge, and down towards Fuller is going to be required, if they have a septic inspection, they're going to be required to tap into the sewer that now lies 22 feet below the ground on 500 feet of East River Road. And I just found this out six weeks ago because we had asked for a septic inspection, because my mother's house has been up for sale, and we were lucky enough to find a bidder, and they asked for a septic inspection. However, the septic inspection was denied because all of a sudden the health department is enforcing the fact that because the house lies within 200 feet, the foundation lies within 200 feet of the sewer system that was installed in 2000, that no one can have a septic turned over to a new buyer, nobody can repair their sewer, nobody can replace, I'm sorry, the septic. Because of this mandate, which has been on the books since '74 and which was modified in '77, nobody out there in Aliria, Carlisle Township, rather, knows this, and I was the lucky person to find out all this information and had to do all this research because of the fact that my mother's house was for sale and the buyer requested a septic inspection. However, in August of 2000, John Sable inspected the house next door's septic and passed it. So my question is, and I've already spoke to Ken Pierce this morning, what happened between August of 2000 and April of 2002 that now, all of a sudden, the health department is playing hardball and requiring everybody who's in that area to tap into the septic, into the sewer system? And it's going to be horrendous wear and tear on the roadway. I mean, there's going to be a lot more work required for the engineers department because the sewer lies on the opposite side of the road, it's on the east side of East River. My mother's house is on the west side. So the road has to be torn open. There's also a fellow here whose house is about five houses farther down East River towards the city than my mother's house, and he's going to have to open up the road to tap into that sewer. And, you know, my point is, first of all, nobody knew about this. Secondly, this was signed off on by the Commissioners over two years ago, and nobody has been, you know, given this information until I got the ball rolling by asking for a septic inspection. And it's going to tear up East River, it's going to look like a washboard by the time everybody's finished drilling underneath it or opening it up to lay the sewer line.
We have the county engineer and the county sanitary engineer who could probably help us with that.
The sanitary sewer installation on East River Road has no assessments. That sewer is there free of charge to the affected property owners. In lieu of that non-assessment, the individual property owners is required to install their tap. Sewer is eight foot to 16 foot deep.
It's 22, I'm sorry, it's 22. I've got the paperwork in front of me.
And the requirement is that the municipal, each individual property owner by the health department is requiring these owners to tap into the sewer.
Ken, are we going to be...
Basically because of the change of ownership.
Are we going to be doing any resurfacing in the area where that sewer lies under this program?
In a couple of years.
Would it be who, us, to come up with a plan together where we put the, at least put the laterals in and made the assessments before the road was repaved? It's not going to make property owners very happy, but it's certainly going to preserve the integrity of a new roadway.
That's a thought. We could, the concept behind that would be, would be a petition process or a direction from Commissioners, but there'll be a public hearing, because all these property owners will be affected, I believe they're...
Would a petition be, would a petition be required if the sewer is already in place? If a petition is required to put the sewer in place, I don't think the petition's required if we find it in the good of the general interest, of the general good of the area for putting those laterals in so that we don't have to dig up a new roadway after we've repaved it to put laterals in.
You're correct, Mr. Cortez. That was the second part of my statement.
Sorry.
So petitioning process is one method, the other method is for the county Commissioners to direct the installation of this, and those individuals will be affected. The advantage of that actually, and the only advantage, quite frankly, is that you're going to get it done, everyone will be serviced 30 foot from the center of the road.
But they're going to be paid.
They would be required, obviously, to tap into when that construction is done. So all property owners will be expected, I assume, by the county health department, to abandon the septic systems and enter into that system and join the Aliria Billings process.
Probably within two years, right? Usually that's a pretty much a rule of thumb after it's available.
Are you saying it's two years plenty of time to put this in?
No, no, I'm saying they would probably, if we put the laterals in, within two, most likely within two years, they would be required to abandon their systems and tap in, right? Once it was available at the right-ofway?
Yes, they're, the health department, I can't speak for them, but I, but you can obviously see that they're quite aggressive in this fact that they haven't required the individual property owners to enter into the last two to three years. The ownership change is what flags their attention, because the bank requires them to inspect. So at that time, that the flag raises, health department requires the property owner to abandon their septic unit to enter into the system because they're within 200 feet of an existing sanitary sewer. Keeping in mind, and I remind everyone, the sewer is there with no assessments.
Right.
But if the Commissioners would permit me, I'd be more than happy to present to them a plan showing what Mr. Cortez has suggested of all the connections. The second advantage of that is that I would, myself, personally, as the county engineer and sanitary engineer, charge individual property owner the same fee. So that way, the deep ones and the shallow ones pay the same, because quite frankly, the essence is service. The service is the same for the 10 footer as well as the 12 footer and the 8 footer.
Commissioner, there's about 70 homes, I believe, affected in the area.
65, yes.
And once, if you authorize Mr. Kearney to proceed with that, the laterals would be brought to the right-ofway, and then after that, the assessments would be made for the laterals, for the cost of the laterals? Are you talking about an assessment or are you talking about tapping? It would have to be an assessment for the lateral. The tap-in fee would be paid by the homeowner in the time period that they were required to tap in, and they would pay that to the City of Aliria, correct?
That's correct.
So we would be only paying for the laterals to the right-ofway, but after that, they're going to be mandated to tap in. Right now, this is a transition sewer line, Mr. Kearney, I talked a great deal about this. This is a transitional sewer line that went through there. None of the homeowners were required to tap in until they sold their property, none of the laterals were put in, so there was no assessments to the homeowners. If this was a, if this had gone through differently, not only would they have been assessed for the cost of the laterals, but they would have been assessed for the cost of the sewer line that went through there, thereby the cost would have been much greater than it even is today.
And what about tapping? That would be another cost.
And that would be another cost. I believe tapping in that area is $2,500 to the City of Aliria just for the tapping. But I don't think that's, the issue right now is nobody knew, the homeowners have no idea this existed, is what I'm hearing. Is that right?
That's correct.
The new buyers may not be aware, I'm sure the existing property owners saw the sewer construction in their front yards.
And when was that? What year was that?
1998, started going in.
Oh, 1998?
It was a year and a half ago.
Also, I, my understanding is the sewer's down the middle of the road? I keep hearing it...
No, it's on the east side of the road.
My plan shows middle, but I'd be more than happy to verify that.
I can show you the paperwork.
I drew the plans, I'd be more than happy to check out the physical construction if there was any movement.
Okay. So what's the basis, what's our basic issue here? Well, Commissioner, if you're going to repave that, that area, and they're going to be required to tap in when the property's sold, as hard as this is to say, and as tasteful it's going to be for people along, along that road, I think we probably should before we repave, look at the issue of installing those laterals so that that roadway doesn't have to be dug up and, and, you know, in disrepair. It's never a good idea to dig up a new roadway, because you do get that washboard problem with the road after enough people have gone across it. So you may want to come up with a program where we put those laterals in. Ken, you and I hadn't talked about that.
Yes, we have, Mr. Cortez. We've talked at this at length, and we do have those two options. Usually the deeper boys go ahead and bore, so they don't disturb the road, but the, I'd be more than happy to present to you a proposal to showing you exactly what the effect of the individual 65 to 70 owners would be, if you'd like.
What happened in 1998? Did they just put a sewer in and not tell anybody, or did everybody who bought it?
This is part, this is part of the agreement the Assistant Prosecutor Innis worked on with the City of Aliria. That's their interceptor sewer coming from the west to the east, it came down Fuller Road, and in order for them to excavate in the county's road right-ofway, they had to secure our approval. And in exchange for that, the City of Aliria agreed to service the specific areas in Carlisle Township outside their corporate boundaries. And this is one of the areas...
I haven't had a chance to show Commissioner Moore the map, but I did...
He wasn't here then?
No.
He seems like he's been here a lot longer.
But I did, I did have a chance to talk to Commissioner Vasquez, and we looked at the map on those service areas that were highlighted there. There were some substantial areas that the City of Aliria agreed to provide service in while bringing the transition line through this area, and they took all three areas, I guess, ended up in the Aliria service area, the East River area, and then the two additional parcels.
That's correct. There was a large area that we've required them to give us to access that sewer, and we have that available to us now through extensive amount of work by Mrs. Blair and Jerry Innis.
Okay, but you're talking about something, are we going to start working on this? Because if they're selling their home now, and they're going to be, how can they be assessed if we don't even know what the assessment's going to be? And I, maybe that's why I'm confused.
I think the issue came to light because of this young lady's experience, so she's the first test case, although there's already been one property that has tied into that sewer. But we have an opportunity here, and I guess my question would be, if in fact the Board wants to proceed with this, perhaps we could speak to the health district, and if there are plans in place, they might allow a period of time for compliance?
Well, if we put the laterals in, there definitely needs to be an assessment. We could probably put a lateral in for this lady here, but then that, that cost is going to be assessed to the property, so somebody's going to pay that cost one way or another. The actual physical tie-in of the property to that lateral on the right-ofway is going to be a homeowner's expense, it always is. So I'm not sure, on your cost data, ma'am, exactly what would be the cost of the lateral to the transition line and what the cost of the rest of the work on the property is, because once, once it's installed, you also have to abandon the sound... have to abandon the sanitary system that's on the property, and that's quite expensive, I understand from, from speaking with people.
Can I speak to this? Because I've, I've been researching this for the past six weeks. And the tap-in fees are twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred dollars. I've already spoken to people at offices. You know, I don't have a problem with that. I don't have a problem with, you know, fees. I don't have a problem with running the line from the house to the road. My issue is having to pay over ten thousand dollars to dig up the road to get to the tap-ins, which were never installed on this sewer to begin with. I guess, you know, things were done quickly and things were done the most cost-effective way for the county. But now, you know, in the paperwork here, it says the county and/or the users shall be responsible for providing, installing, constructing, maintaining, repairing, replacing, and so on and so forth, this sewer, the southwest, southeast sewer. So, you know, I'm willing to pay my fair share. I'm willing to, you know, do whatever I can with all those homeowners, because I'm gonna petition people, and I'm gonna get, a lot of people need to know about this. And, you know, I don't have a problem with that, but the problem is, you know, we need to, like, first of all, get it to the light of day, and secondly, do what it takes to get laterals installed on the other side of the road, so that people can tap in without paying ten thousand dollars.
The, the laterals can be installed, but in the end, the cost of those laterals will be assessed to the property owners. So, whether the individual property owner does it, or whether it's done as a joint concerted effort, the cost still comes back on to the property owners. So-
I don't think that's what she's saying.
No, but she's saying that in the agreement, I'm not trying to be argumentative. The agreement says the county and/or the property owner.
Right.
In the end, though, the cost still comes back to the property owner. And I need, I, that is the way all these sewers work. Now, if, if, if the county does it, and Ken can actually spread the cost out, what he said, and it makes perfect sense that some are deeper, some are in this deep, so the costs are greater for some homeowners than others. He can take the whole project cost, aggregate that, and give each homeowner the same cost for that on the assessment, 'cause that would be averaged out for the assessment. But the assessment's still gonna be put back onto the property. So, it's either gonna be paid upfront by the property owner, or it's gonna be paid over an assessment period of time by the property owner. But in the end, the cost still is the burden of the, of the people receiving the benefit of the service, because once the sewer's installed, the property value goes up. That's how, that's why the assessment's made.
Yeah, but how long, I mean, are we talking about a timing issue? What if someone sells their home today and-
Well, I-
I'm being blocked from trying to sell my home. This guy down the street is in, and it's in limbo, too.
Right. That's why I wanna find out. Ken, can you answer that? Or, 'cause I don't wanna wait, I mean, homeowners don't wanna wait two years to sell.
I think the appropriate method is contact Mr. Pierce.
I did. Today.
I mean, no, no, I'm sorry. I will contact Mr. Pierce and show him that we are proposing, or I have a request from the commissioners, if such is desired, to alleviate any future problems of this nature by getting a proposal, seeing what the cost would incur, on getting all laterals installed for all sixty-five affected property owners. Each individual property owner would pay the fair equitable share, which would be in the equal number. So, the short laterals will pay this, the long laterals will pay the same as the short laterals, because, as I said before, you're paying for the service connection, not actually the construction. At that point, I would request Mr. Pierce to delay any activity on forcing individual property owners to connect.
Good. That's what's happening here.
He has waited a period of time. I believe we can convince Mr. Pierce to accept our, and quite frankly, I think he would look forward to this problem being solved at one type of construction within one year.
I think that works, because what we're doing is telling the health department that we're gonna correct the issue. The county's gonna be putting in the, taking care of it. Why should homeowners wait another year? Because of, it sounds like to me, it's a timing issue within a bureaucracy. 'Cause that, 'cause that's what it sounds like to me. There's a timing issue here.
It's been six weeks.
I know, but government's a little bit, I'm just saying, right now, you're talking two years-
Well, it's been two years and four years when it, you know, when the paperwork was first put in the motion.
I'm trying to get to the bottom where what, and it sounds like Mr. Carney has offered a solution to say, "Look, if the county steps up, says, 'Here's our plan to do this,' why should these homeowners be hindered in selling their properties?" You know, because we're going to be doing this plan. That's what he's trying, that's what he's offering, all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Commissioner, if, if, if you, if you don't go forward after you talk to Mr., Mr. Pierce, and, and the home is allowed to be sold with the present sanitary system that's there, and we don't do this project, then every homeowner that wants to sell on there's gonna come in and expect the same treatment.
No, 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 no. You're saying if we don't go ahead?
You're gonna have sixty-four other residents up here that don't want these laterals.
He's not talking about one person.
No, he's talking about-
Ken's talking about sixty-five homes that say, "This is what Loraine County is going to be doing for the next twelve months. Can you alleviate some of the pressures on these homeowners that are trying to sell by at least, you know, right? Is that what you're trying to offer, is to say, 'Look, you know what? Give us some time on this.'" Now, the problem becomes, who's gonna be, okay, let's hypothet, I'm gonna give you a hypothetical situation. Let's say she sells a home tomorrow based on an agreement that the county's gonna do, which is what I think you're offering, Ken, is to say, "Look, this is what our plan's gonna be. This is what we're gonna do." They sell. Who's gonna be held accountable now for that fee? I guess that's my issue. It's gonna be, is it gonna, do we put a, do we put a lien, an escrow on the sale of that property now and put it in escrow? I mean, do you see that's the issue?
You're going to see that problem over a period of twelve months, in its sales and purchases of homes throughout that area, and that, and particularly that street.
All right.
It's a fair and equitable solution just to work with Mr. Pierce to permit the sale of that property. And we would notify probably the grantiers and grantors both that this is an affected, accepted, and expected fee.
But who's gonna be held accountable for that fee, then? The seller or the buyer?
Does it go on the taxes, Ken?
At the point of sale prior to the acceptance of the contract, it would be, we would probably notify the respective buyer to be aware of that expected fee.
Can I speak to that?
But it sounds like to me, you can't sell a home right now on that street. Right now, it sounds like if you own a home on that street today, you can't sell it. That's what it sounds like what I'm hearing today.
Yeah.
Because Mr. Pierce, because the health department, and rightfully so, is requiring the connection before they approve the bank.
Are they requiring a proprietary, or are they requiring an agreement from the purchaser to tap in or the seller? I don't know which.
Because my buyer's going FHA, and FHA requires that if indeed there has to be a sewer tap-in, it has to be taken care of before closing. And I've been talking to my buyer in the interest of trying to keep this buyer on the hook, and I am in the process of negotiating with them. If you could give me a ballpark figure of what the lateral and the tap-in, you know, the whole nine yards, if you can give me an approximation, I have agreed in principle with this buyer to put, you know, to give them an extra amount of money to be used when this does come down and when they do have to tap in.
I can, I can get that figure in seven days.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Fantastic. And how long would it take to get a, a plan to Mr. Pierce?
I'm sorry, question again?
How long would it take?
On behalf of Mr. Pierce, I'm supposed to express-
No, no. You said you're gonna talk to Mr. Pierce about giving the county's position, the county's plan, and how to deal with the situation. You said you're gonna-
Well, I would request, I would request the commissioners to direct me to prepare a plan at a project cost estimated within ten percent of the expected proposed assessment for each affected property owner. Then we go to, then probably some public hearings, because you're gonna have affected sixty-five people, unless we can waive that and have someone call this a public nuisance. But I don't think that's going to happen. I don't think every, everything is failing out there. They're just waiting for purchases so they can enter by law, state law, or the PA.
Why don't we authorize Ken to get with K and E and come up with a, 'cause you're gonna need them to do the, the work out there, right?
They're the original designers we approved.
I don't want to do something today, but if we can alleviate this woman's problem today, it sounds like we can in seven days.
Yes.
Then, in the meantime, start getting us a plan that we can discuss.
Can you bring us back some cost data for K and E to perform this survey to, what they would charge us to do that?
Yes, I can even get that within seven days.
Okay.
Okay. This way, we'll have something to work at, how much it's gonna cost us to go forward and look at the engineering and to get the cost out that's gonna be needed.
Do you have to be authorized to do that?
I will present that to you for your consideration and-
That'll be a, it'll be a proposal, so it won't have any cost at this time.
Okay.
Approximate cost within ten percent, and I can probably bring that to you a week from today.
Okay.
If you like.
Okay.
Just one more point. There is a, a public hearing on Saturday morning, next Saturday, at the municipal service building in La Grange at nine AM. And I believe there's a representative who's gonna be there from the health department. And, you know, I'm gonna let as many people as I know know about this hearing that's coming up on Saturday morning, and perhaps that this might be brought up all over again. So, I just wanna let people be aware of that.
I appreciate that.
What time is the?
Nine AM.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Ken.
Mrs. Blair?
I think we're voting a number fifteen.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's why you're here. Keep track of the rest, I'm watching. Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Okay. Approve and enter into allocation agreement between the board of commissioners on behalf of Loraine County Sheriff and the city of Loraine, Ohio, so that the disparate allocation claim can be resolved, thus enabling the city and county to receive fiscal year 2002 grant funds and be eligible for fiscal year 2003 grant funds. Loraine County has been awarded a local law enforcement block grant from the Federal Bureau of Justice Assistance. For the federal fiscal year 2002, the county will receive twenty thousand, six hundred, seventy-nine dollars. The city of Loraine will receive seventy-five thousand, ninety-seven dollars. And we also need to authorize the president or vice president to execute on behalf of the board.
So moved.
Second, and-
Discussion?
The sheriff like to speak, or?
Would you have any questions?
No, I have none.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to approve the state fiscal year 2003 Department of Job and Family Services Medicaid Outreach Program with a budget request for one hundred, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred, ninety-five dollars and ninety-one cents in federal share funds and thirteen thousand, five hundred, fifty-five dollars, nine cents in local match funds, which is from the income maintenance funds, for a total of one hundred, thirty-five thousand, five hundred, fifty-one dollars. The following services will be provided through the Department of Job and Family Services. First will be outreach workers stationed at other locations to assist with applications. B, transportation for outreach workers. C, billboard placed along Loraine County highways. D, county telephone hotline, number would be one, eight, seven, seven, well kids. E, health fairs, county fairs, and job fairs. And F, promotional items and other printed materials such as tote bags, whistles, letter openers. I'd to authorize the president or vice president to execute the plan on behalf of the board, and authorize Mary Lugolsky, director from the Job and Family Services, to execute contracts on behalf of the commissioners as needed, with the county prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Joe, where would the outreach workers be located?
Same place they're currently located now, at the health departments. One at the county health department, one in the city of Loraine, and one at the city of Alaria health department.
So, there will be three?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioners, this is the last year of this program also. Right? Is that correct?
As far as we know at this point, yes.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
I'd to approve change order to the Williams Brothers Builders of Alaria, Ohio, in the amount of twenty-two thousand, one hundred dollars to remove existing roofing to the metal deck at the areas in the north and south pods where ponding water occurs at the Loraine County Correctional Facility. New roof will be sloped to drains using tapered insulation. All work per manufacturer specifications. All demolition materials removed to the approved dump site. The east shingle roof is also missing, and two pieces of eight-inch fascia cap at ten feet long. The replacement of these are included. Loraine County Sheriff and RWL Architects have reviewed and recommends approval. Funds are available in the sheriff's jail construction fund capital improvements account.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to authorize Mary Lugolsky, director from the Job and Family Services, to purchase computer hardware for document imaging services through state purchasing utilizing schedule number five, thirty-three, one fifty, dash, two, that expires June thirtieth of 2003, through Compact Computer Corporation in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, eight hundred, eighty-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
I'd to amend resolution number zero-two, dash, two fifty-five. It was adopted March twenty-eighth, 2002, in order to change the amounts for professional services and software and the software vendor for the contract between the Department of Job and Family Services and CGI Group Incorporated for the document imaging project. Due to unforeseen circumstances, the change in vendor for software will be from Scionics to Highland Software, state purchasing term scheduled number five, thirty-three, two seventy-seven, dash, one. Cost of the software shall now be reduced from one hundred, twenty-eight thousand, one hundred, sixty-seven dollars to fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars from their computer account. Due to the change in software vendor, additional programming will now be required, which results in increasing the professional services contract with CGI Group Incorporated from one hundred, fifty-one thousand dollars to two hundred, sixteen thousand, two hundred dollars from the professional services account.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
I'd to issue a notice to proceed to R. Joseph Construction Incorporated from Avon, Ohio, for the Grafton Township building school elevator project effective May twenty-eighth, 2002. Contract was awarded by resolution zero-two, two seventy-two, adopted April fourth, 2002.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mrs. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mrs. Vancy?
Aye.
Reports, comments? Mr. Cortez, administrator?
I have a, a couple issues this morning. First, if I can beg the board's indulgence, I'd like to have a, a construction manager come briefly and update the board as to where we are in our construction project. I did see some dirt being dug out and some things going on over at the site, so I'm pleased that the activity level is, is, is increasing. And I did meet, meet with senior staff from RP Carboni late yesterday afternoon into the evening, and we went over quite a few things and some specifics of how we'd like to see things continue to move. They were very responsive, and Mr. Sisnawski's here to give us a brief report.
Hello?
Good morning, Joe.
Well, since in the month, a little more than a month that, since we started construction or we let the contracts and opened the bids, et cetera, we have been working. I know there've been some questions coming from the community as, because it doesn't really look at the kinds of things that have been going on. Or first of all, we were doing the review process on the contracts and preparing the contracts for the various people. And then each of the contractors, especially for the work in the foundations and that, they have certain engineering requirements that they're required to provide us. And their engineers and our engineers have been conferring on that, and the documents have been prepared, and as of at the beginning of this week, have been approved. So, as of today, we have a preliminary crew out here doing additional cleanup. We had done some work immediately after the start of the job that needed to be done back then to make ready for surveying. You can't see it, but there are pins all over the place for location of critical portions of the building. That was laid out and confirmed. The engineering has been performed. That has been approved by the architects and engineers, your people. And the steel started arriving for the caissons. We have a very large rig arriving to drill the caissons, which is the first part of the foundations, sometime today. This is one of the larger projects in the county that you've done, and some of the, some of the scale of what we're gonna see is fairly large. It isn't quite like building a garage addition. The rig that we're bringing in required special permits. It's coming from West Virginia. It's a hundred five foot long. It's very difficult to turn the roads. We had people out here in advance looking through how to get it here. We had to get state permits to move it across the state. We have done so, and we are on our way. So, you begin to see progress in the more direct fashion as we begin to dig our hole. We are in general working on progress on schedule for this project.
Any questions?
So, the, the vehicle's coming today?
The rig is due sometime today. We don't know where in the state it is now. It's coming from West Virginia sometime early this morning.
Okay, Joe, so it's gonna be here today, right? That means today, at the Thursday?
Oh, I'm not promising anybody any, it's a big job and it takes two years to finish, but yes, that's our expectation.
This is, this is a huge piece of equipment. It's gonna, it's gonna tower over the site. So, I know that they, they were having a hard time getting cooperation of ODOT to get cooperation of ODOT to get that piece of equipment here, and that was one of the issues you were working out. This is just an ongoing process as we keep the public informed of where we are with the progress. I know there's been some concerns, and I appreciate you coming in and reporting those.
My pleasure.
Once again, if friends in the meeting, if you go over there, you'll see a lot of activity on the site. So I'm very pleased with the progress to date, and I'm very pleased with the cooperation we're getting, and things are moving along smoothly, and we don't anticipate any further difficulties. Thanks, Joe.
See what happens when you write a story like that, guys?
Be ready with your cameras to take pictures of this.
My second issue this morning also concerns the Justice Center. While we were in the value engineering design phase and cost containment phase of working on the Justice Center, we were trying to, and we still are trying to, get the largest bang for the fewest dollars. Some of the areas that we wanted to pay particular attention to, but we didn't because we wanted to see what the outcome in other areas was, was the lobby area and the foyer area of the Justice Center. Since we are under budget and we have value engineers, quite a few dollars of savings in the project, I want to present to the Board some possible design issues with the lobby areas. There'll be some increased costs, but I think that any dollars that we spend, we should spend on increasing the aesthetics of that area of the Justice Center. With that, I'd like to present the architect and a few rendering drawings he has for your look, and he has some sample materials. And once he's done with that, I also want to talk about the signage on the building and possible locations of signage on the building. It won't take too long, but we'll have to break. I need to let our architect know we'll have to break at 10:30 for a public meeting. Do you want to start this, or do you want to wait five minutes, take a break, have the public meeting, then start? I don't know how you feel about that.
Let's do a public meeting first.
How long is a public meeting going to last?
Ron?
Public?
It's your public meeting, isn't it?
Okay.
Right.
As long as we want it, right?
At least 20 minutes.
We're just paying these guys by the hour. I'd rather get the architect over with. That's just my own personal thing.
They're going to be paid whether they're here or not, so it's up to you. I don't know how you're going to feel. We got three minutes here.
Can we do it in three minutes?
No.
Oh.
I can't.
Is that, does that, you want to be, okay.
Let's get rid of them.
Okay.
Public hearing? No.
Let's get rid of the architects.
I think the architect's going to take 15 or 20 minutes.
Oh, you didn't tell us that.
Okay, then I guess he waits.
You're the chairman, you make the call.
Oh, I'd rather not have him here today at all, so there's my call.
Well, we have three very different opinions here.
There you go.
Okay.
We have a public meeting at 10:30, so I think we should stick to what the public's here for, so.
We'll put you right on after the public meeting. Thank you.
Is that the end of your report?
Sorry about that. He came up all excited to go.
No, it's not the end of my report.
Well, then you've probably got two minutes. Can you finish your report in two minutes?
No, because it has to come after the rest of this.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to take a three-minute break and then start the public meeting?
Yeah. We'll take a three-minute break. Do you want to get your reports, Sen. Go? He wants to go. You're trying.
The prosecutor's report.
Yeah, go ahead. Did you want, did you have a report?
Prosecutor's report, Mr. Manger?
Oh, good. That was quick.
That's his way of getting out of here now, so.
How about Commissioner's report?
Now, we can wait on that. Let's take a quick break. We've got three minutes.
Okay.
We'll take a quick break, come back for the public meeting. Hal, are you ready for us, Hal? We're back, okay. We're here for a public hearing at 10:30. It is now 10:38, and Ron Twining, you have the call.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Ron Twining, T W Ryan, I N G. I'm the Community Development Director for the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, and today I am providing staff support in a recommendation from the County Planning Commission, which serves under your authority. Today with me, I have Kristen Brandon, and I will ask Kristen to circulate among those in attendance with a sign-in sheet, since this is an official public hearing, to amend our county subdivision regulations. So Kristen, if you would start. Our county subdivision regulations were last revised in April 24, 1997. Today, we are about to present several, I think there are three amendments with several parts to affect the length, maximum length of a cul-de-sac. In just a few minutes, I will take a look at some drawings here and add graphically to that, because the purpose of this public hearing is to explain to the public, as well as the Board of Commissioners, the intent of this proposed change, and we will do that both verbally and graphically. We have a handout that was available on the back of the room that identifies the wording this amendment will place into the subdivision regulations and the sections that will be modified. Again, we are here to conduct this public hearing to inform the public. For some time, the County Planning Commission has been uncomfortable with the maximum length of cul-de-sacs. They have been approving, and their jurisdiction, I should point out, is primarily in the unincorporated areas, or the township areas, of Lorraine County. For some time, several parcels of land will come in with proposed developments, and we are seeing single dead-end cul-de-sac streets that have lengths that exceed 2,000, 2,500. We even had one that was 3,800 feet long that was proposed with a single dead-end street. To put that in some kind of sense of what you can do, and if the Commissioners want to stay there, they can, but I'm about to start drawing on the Board, and you probably will not be able to see because my intent is to show this to the public, but for some time, or presently, our code allows only a maximum length of 600 feet. So we have been approving subdivisions and therefore unofficially granting a waiver on the maximum length of cul-de-sacs, and what we are trying to do is strike a compromise between what's currently maximum length and what we feel is more realistic. I will try to speak loud so that everybody can hear. What I have here is a sample parcel of land. It includes 135.5 acres, and for demonstration purposes, we have an existing roadway here, an existing roadway there, and this is, this purple line is the property line that contains the 135 acres in that square lot. If a developer, under the present system, wanted to put a new road extension and lots, they are permitted to come down here and put in a, and I'm showing not the pavement area, but I'm showing the right-of-way. They are allowed technically to put in 600 feet. Technically, that 600 feet, most townships require two acres minimum with typically about 200 foot of frontage, some are 250, some are 300. And for purposes, I will just quickly sketch in what our current code ideally would allow us to approve on, and this line is up here on the center line of the street. This is 135 acres. This total length here is 2,640 acres, or one-half mile. Our current county subdivision regulations basically only allow six houses to go on this 135 acres. Now, if you want to preserve open space, it's not a bad deal, but it's not good long-term use of our property. So that you know what we are typically seeing and approving at the county level is a street that is typically that long, and you will have parcels. And again, these are approximately 350 feet deep with 200 foot of frontage as a general rule, and that's the development, and then you'll come along and you will see road frontage development that goes here, and that's the typical development pattern in Lorraine County, and this typically would be split with either two or three lots there. And at some point, we hope somebody has a good purpose for that parcel of land that's left out. They may actually bring another cul-de-sac in here, depending on what the local township zoning will permit, what the frontage is, and a few other things. In our proposal today, the same 135 acres, same two roads, same property line layout, we are proposing a couple of things, and I'm looking at what we're classifying as medium-density parcel. If you want to have a technical look, we say the current regulations indicate this is, again, the maximum development, and this is undeveloped and virtually hard or difficult under the current codes to allow realistically for any development to occur back there. Where the Planning Commission is willing to strike a compromise with a 200-foot density, and I believe that was if it's the medium size, if it was one unit per acre, up to four, one unit per four acres would be the definition they were going to add to the subdivision. If you had 200 foot of frontage, ideally, this would come back to an 800-foot length for only adding 200 foot to the existing because it's a medium density. You can have, you know, as many as one unit for every two acres. But we're also suggesting that if it's a long lot, that we will require or permit the developer to propose a stub street, which is the original 800-foot, yeah, 800-foot length, and put a cul-de-sac in there. If they want and have additional property, they can do away with the cul-de-sac at that distance, put in a stub street that measured from the road right-of-way back 50 feet on either side to allow for future road extensions. This stub street will provide a turnaround for fire trucks, delivery trucks, emergency vehicles, school buses. We are having the developers propose a right-of-way reservation as a deed restriction in the subdivision, whatever phases they're proposing. This could be three phases, this being the first phase, this being the second phase, and the rest of the property being the third phase. During the first phase, both of these right-of-ways will be preserved for future use for public streets. The stub streets will be there short for this turnaround like we talked about, but also as a future extension and location for future streets and better layouts, and hopefully it will alleviate this isolated parcel of land under this ideal proposal that we have laid out. If they provide the stub streets under the modified, amended regulations, we would then let them go with a second cul-de-sac of the same distance, not to exceed that, down to this point. So you'd have an intersection with a potential turnaround or relief, turnaround and relief, and then the dead-end nature. This would not be dead-end. This is still 1,600 feet in length, but at least you have the potential for future street connections and relief at this point. And again, the scenario for the lot layouts, I won't draw them all in, but down here with the stub streets, you have the potential for several lots to be laid out again as we did before under the other. This is, again, with 200 foot of frontage. I think it allows for some movement towards what the developers have been submitting without having it open-ended. It's whatever length they want in order to meet the needs of this property. Again, I will point out that this is one full, one-half mile from this road right-of-way down to this property line. So it would be nearly a half-mile street that would be put in. If you have low density, what we are suggesting here, under the definition section, low density would be four acres or larger for one residential structure. We're saying the length of the street can be longer, because as you can see here, I've already drawn this in. Each, as I've drawn here, each parcel that's being created, each sublot, is four and a half acres in this scenario. At four and a half acres, you're going down to, I think that was 1,500 feet that the regulations are calling for, and you're only having eight houses put on that length of street. The theory is, you're still going to have the same size house built here, and there's going to be much greater distance between structures for any fire or hazard like that to jump from one structure to the next, and you're not going to have the demand for services, and so the length of the street should be reflected in what our subdivision codes require. So that's what we're looking at when we introduce the definition section for low density. I flipped one too many pages. The other definition that we are proposing would be for high density. Again, the original 600 feet would come in right here. We are suggesting that we increase the length and for the lower density, these are 90-foot lots, because you can go from one unit per acre, depending on the local zoning, one unit per acre, to as many as four units per acre. So I'm going to draw in quickly. That's our 600-foot distance. We have taken the proposal, the extra 200 feet, I'm using the wrong color, 200 feet, and we're going here to the 800, and we'll give the definitions from the description here in just a second. And you're allowing for more parcels to be created. Again, the same stub street would be required if they want to go the second distance, and ultimately, even on the smaller lots, you would come down to about this area and have one here. You see the density increases, and we're regulating the length of the street. You have a lot more houses. The length of the street and the relief locations ought to be adjusted. At least that's the conclusion that the Planning Commission have come to. Specifically, what they are suggesting, and I will give you the wording that they are calling for, the low density, which was the eight houses that we looked at, the land to be used for residential purpose, where there is only one dwelling unit on four acres of land or more, the medium density, which is the one that we showed, second with the 200 foot of frontage, the medium-density residential would be land to be used for residential purpose, where there is more than one unit on four acres of land, but not more than one unit on one acre of land. So you have that range of one to four acres as far as density. The numbers, as I remember, it'd go from about 200 foot of frontage to a 350-foot of depth to about 350 or 425 foot of frontage with about 500-foot, 600-foot of depth in order to get the four acres. So that's the medium density. We're adding that to the definition section. The third definition, and these are all new definitions, the third definition would be high residential, and that's land to be used for residential purposes, where there is more than one dwelling unit on one acre of land. So in other words, you're getting into multiple units on a single acre. This one that I presented here that you're looking at right now with 90 foot of frontage is really on less than three-quarters of an acre. We do have township areas in our urbanized area to the north, Sheffield Township, Elaria Township being the two most notable, that have less than two-acre requirements because they do have the ability in some places to have sewer line hookups. And as we begin to move forward on the issue of sewer, sanitary sewers, we likely will see more development and zoning changes to allow smaller lots to conserve land, and we hope also to conserve open space at the same time, the conservation area. So that would be added, those three definitions would be added to Section, Article III, Section 302 of the Code. That's alphabetical order, and we would put it in under density and then define those three. The next change would end up in Article VII, Section 701.4, Dead End Streets, Item One, Permanent. There is currently wording in there. We are dropping some words and adding a few to add clarity to what we're doing, but what we want to end up with is, has been passed out to the Commissioners, to the audience today. I will attempt to read that. Dead-end streets, cul-de-sacs, or other approved dead-end streets will be designed to be permanent and not longer than 1,500 feet in low-density areas, 1,000 feet in medium-density areas, and 800 feet in the high-density areas, the maximum length of any. The maximum length of any dead-end street cul-de-sac shall not exceed twice the distance permitted based on density provided temporary stub streets are used. The length of the dead-end street cul-de-sac will be measured from the nearest street intersection of an existing road, not from a temporary stub street. Quickly, what we're doing is, we're saying, because you have a temporary stub street, there is an intersection there. We are not saying, you keep putting temporary stubs, you can keep lengthening by another the length of the cul-de-sac. We're stopping it at twice the intended length of a cul-de-sac. So again, that wording would replace the wording under 701.4 Dead End Streets, Number 1, Permanent. We are asking that a new item be added that is not even talked about in the current subdivision. That would fall under Section 701.4 Dead End Streets 2, and it would say Temporary. Then, Item B, Stub Streets shall include a publicly dedicated street right-of-way to the property line. A paved road surface shall be installed in accordance with the width required by the county subdivision regulations and with the length of 50 feet of continuous impervious material consistent with the impervious, or the pavement material of the subdivision. The length shall be measured from the intersection, intersecting street right-of-way to the rear edge of the pavement on the proposed stub street. The design of the construction, the design and construction of stub streets shall be consistent with the intersection requirements, including radii of these regulations. The Planning Commission has been concerned about this issue since 1998, July. They have had several discussions. They have been careful and very cautious not to have those discussions at the same time a proposed development is in front of them, because they want to make sure, or they wanted to make sure, that they were impartial and fair as they debated these issues. We actually had this appear in written form first on the August 2001 Planning Commission agenda. Between July, or August and November, there were discussions at about every Planning Commission meeting. We have probably gone through more drafts than we care to admit, and the Planning Commission cares to remember. Finally, on February 28, they agreed to the wording that has been presented to the public and to the commissioners today, with a recommendation that the Board of Commissioners adopt as an amendment this language to the county subdivision regulation, and give a revision date 30 days after passage of the resolution by the Board of Commissioners. This is being submitted to the board in accordance to Section 211 of the county subdivision regulations, and that Section 211 is called Amendments. We have presented this throughout the entire discussion process with Mr. Ennis. He gave his approval in February on that. We did make-